Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to this additional council meeting. I'd like to begin by inviting councillor Greg James to do the welcome to country.
Thank you, Mayor O'Keeffe and my fellow councillors. Firstly, I pay my respects to our ancestors and I acknowledge our elders, both past, present and emerging. I would like to acknowledge the Yorta Yorta Nations and all its people, whose land we meet on today. So, on behalf of the Elders Council, the sixteen family groups and the eight respected tribes, I welcome you all to this wonderful land and country that we share with everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor James. We Greater Shepparton City Council acknowledge the Yorta Yorta peoples of the land, which now comprises Greater Shepparton. We pay our respect to their tribal elders, we celebrate their continuing culture and we acknowledge the memory of their ancestors. Item number three, which is our privacy notice, this public meeting is being streamed live via our Facebook page and made available for public access on our website, along with official minutes of this meeting. Governance principles, council considers that the recommendations contained in this agenda gives effect to the overarching governance principles stated in section nine slash two of the Local Government Act 2020. These principles are listed in the agenda, item one to nine. Do we have any apologies tonight, councillors? No, everyone's present? Declarations of conflict of interest, do we have any declarations of conflict of interest to be declared?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keeffe. I'm going to declare a conflict of interest in the next agenda item, which is seven point one. The description is the adoption of the Shepparton-Marupna 2050 Regional Growth Plan and the conflict of interest arises because of a material conflict of interest.
Thank you very much. We now ask you to leave the meeting. So councillors, on page seven of the agenda, item seven point one, Adoption of the Shepparton and Marupna 2050 Regional City Growth Plan, would a councillor like to move a motion? Councillor Priestley?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keeffe. I would like to move the recommendation as a motion as printed on page seven of tonight's agenda with some additional words, which I've supplied to the governance team if they would like to display them.
And the recommendation is page seven through to eleven?
Page seven, two to eleven, correct.
Thank you.
So the additions are on page fifty-seven, clause six point four point two, delete the words 'in addressing the region's organic material', page fifteen, vision point five be replaced with the following text, be a leader in renewable energy generation, climate change adaption and greenhouse gas emission reduction, page seventeen, outcome five, title to read 'A City That Is Greener and Embraces Water', page seventeen, objective six, to ensure adaption to climate change, greenhouse gas emissions reduction in line with state government policy and a robust economy for continued prosperity in times of change.
So councillors, you'll have a copy of that in front of you and it is also up on the screen, so everyone's clear on that addition. Do I have a second, or councillor Brophy?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keeffe. I second that motion.
Thank you very much. Councillor Priestley, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keeffe. Under any version of a 2050 plan, there are landholders that are winners and losers. Arguments of fairness are often cited, like whose land has waited the longest for rezoning. But by and large, these arguments are put by people who stand to have their land value increase. They are good people, often with sound arguments, trying to do the right thing by their families. But this is not always the right thing for our community when all things are considered. The sole criteria is to judge what provides the best benefit to the whole of the community. In making this decision, in total, I think I've put in over two hundred hours, preparing, reading thousands of pages, talking to council officers and reviewing the many submissions for the decision. I'm your representative and I have done my best to understand the whole story. So as a resident, you can know, next week, when you hear part of the story from those that are disappointed, I have looked at the whole story and made a decision that's about Joe Average in our community, not Joe Developer or Joe Landholder. I've thoroughly investigated potential changes that submitters have requested. Often the submitters have a good case, but I've formed the view that those changes don't create a net benefit to the community when you take into account the likely cost and delay. Key in my consideration is the chances of any changes requested succeeding through the next stage of planning approval. In our state, authorities like the Victorian Planning Authority, Regional Roads Victoria, Golden Murray Water and the Catchment Management Authority have significant power to influence planning decisions. Many of the changes proposed by landholders are not supported by these authorities, commonly called referral authorities. Pretending this is not true is like pretending the tax office does not exist. You might get away with it for a while, but it does not end well. Our community has spent years and many, many thousands of dollars researching and consulting in support of this plan to get to this point. My view is that in many cases, the changes are opposed by three or even four referral authorities, so it is wasting your money, residents' money, to include them in the plan and then spend years in battle with referral authorities at the next stage of approval, where we will all but guaranteed to have these changes struck out. I'm not going to do it, but the easy decision for me is to cave in to interest groups and make changes requested to the plan. But it's a hollow victory as these changes will be struck out and the whole community will pay both in time and cost fighting referral authorities to include them. So I commend the plan as recommended with the changes I have added. It is a good plan prepared by professional, dedicated, intelligent people. It provides a clear path to the future built on solid planning footing, not years of disputes and uncertainty that our community simply can't afford. In reaching my decision to support the 2050 recommendation put together by council officers, my only guiding principle is what is best, is in the best interests of the whole of our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Priestley. Councillor Brophy, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, thank you, Mayor O'Keeffe. I have carefully considered the 2050 Shepparton-Marupna Growth Plan, have travelled the length and breadth of the areas to which have caused the most amount of interest. I have met with the council's planning department, I have listened to all the advice, thoughts and commentary, be it from council executive, the lawyers, the submitters, my own colleagues and the general communities feel on how this should be delivered. In the main, a lot of work has taken place over the last past four years to have essentially the plan we have, which is in essence is a sound and solid document into which we can move forward. The 2050 Growth Plan is just that, a plan, not an act of parliament, but a plan to go forward. It is not set in stone and it will be monitored and reviewed biannually, specifically on the residential growth. I suspect that should our growth exceed the high one point three percent to perhaps a staggering two percent growth rate, then those parcels of land earmarked medium term may become short term, the long term might become medium and those areas outside the settlement boundary and earmarked beyond 2050 brought forward into the plan a lot earlier and upon review. The plan is a generational vision of what we see over the next thirty years. What it also does is take away the ambiguity of investigation areas and provides for most surety of their parcel of land. We have been instructed by our planning department that when we query justifiable areas to be included in the 2050 plan and many by personal and group submitters, that they cannot be considered because they are outside the scope or the supply needed for the 2050. More specifically, we have been instructed that they fall outside the settlement boundary and that the agencies do not support the residential or industrial growth at this point in time. I will not argue against that. For me to feel that we have done justice to the overall integrity of the plan, the submitters, including the agencies and the authorities, we have to be consistent and remain within those settlement boundaries. So let me just talk a little bit about some of these areas of interest. Should we consider such worthwhile land corridors or sections? There is one as an example that ticks virtually every box. We know that Dobson's Estate, for instance, is an anomaly and wouldn't have been considered under an urban regional planning scheme now. However, it does exist and has merit. There is an extremely strong argument that says that that parcel of land immediately north of Dobson's Estate, up to the boundary of New Dukie Road and aligned with each of the existing boundaries, both west and east of Dobson's Estate, would provide surety for a land that is not predominantly used now for agriculture. It has town water supply, gas, electricity, sewerage connections to the corners and the said parcel of land has the NBN. It's geographically appealing to those that are in the industrial area or students who will attend Greater Shepparton Secondary College. Houses already exist along New Dukie Road and in that parcel of land, it doesn't interfere with the Shepparton alternative route.
Time, would you like an extension?
Yes, please.
That's granted, thank you.
Nor Greater Golden Murray Water's irrigation infrastructure and the modernisation programme. It makes perfect sense to include this, but I am reminded that we have to consider all the submissions and be consistent and this, although favourable and a possible inclusion, is outside the settlement boundary. Which also brings me then to former Radio Australia site. Yes, there are some appealing aspects to this parcel of land, being a one land title, potential upfront developer contribution costs, no agricultural ties, hence no irrigation infrastructure, somewhat of a greenfield site and ideally in time, a solid piece of land. However, we are told that we have ample supply of residential land in Shepparton and Marupna between now and 2050, which already is allocated and contained in the plan, but not yet developed. So why are we including this? So I asked that question. Another area is Kyla Central area. In time, with the strategy, I'm sure it will be residential zoning beyond 2050. Marupna to the west presents an excellent parcels of land and if it were not for the potential bypass and the flood inundation would be very well supported to expand in the medium term. Land east of Doyle's Road, I am satisfied that this is virtually, or should remain within the farming zone, with the exception perhaps of the alignment as already indicated, to be light industrial or agriculturally based. These are the proposed additional recommendations that could be put forward to the existing recommendations of the plan and the advice received clearly indicates that should they be passed, there could be potential legal action, there could be additional panel hearings, additional consultation phases and we'll blow out the plan in an adopted, up to eighteen months down the track and at a cost to council. Should we have had the luxury of an additional twelve months to test the technical aspects of the proposed changes, we would be in a stronger position to make some, many or no further changes, but we do not have that luxury. At the very vast majority of our community, we want surety of what we can or cannot do over the next thirty years. For those who are not satisfied with the outcome of this plan's recommendation, you will have the opportunity to present your case when it comes before the planning scheme amendment phase. I congratulate each councillor who have anguished over this plan and have left no stone unturned to see that the overall Shepparton-Marupna communities are the beneficiaries of the 2050 plan. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Brophy. Would any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Councillor Summer?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keeffe. After an extreme amount of time spent on this by councillors, the worst case scenario that I could have imagined is that we all put our hands up for an unabridged version of this document with only minor incidental changes. Unfortunately, we were given last minute legal advice before the last meeting, which has changed the course of events and that worst case scenario is exactly what we're looking at. So I would like to foreshadow a motion that you should all be very familiar with. There's hard copies in front of you and we have examined each of these issues in detail over the last couple of months. I know some of you agree with what's in there and I urge you to please use this last opportunity to speak up. So 2050 is only a strategy at this point. There is room for further consultation at the planning scheme amendment stage. We are talking about long-term outcomes for our community, so panels and legal challenges are not something we should be afraid of. Even if a panel throws all these changes in the bin, which is unlikely, at least we know we've followed a robust and accountable process for the good people of Shepparton and Marupna. So to preempt what the media might say, the changes in my foreshadowed motion are not simply populist or flippant ideas. They came from councillors and the extended duration of consultation and frequency of discussion by councillors demonstrates that serious consideration has gone into each of these parcels of land. I'm comfortable that we have strategic justification for these changes. So in a nutshell, the motion proposes to remove Radio Australia site from the document, include land north of Dobson Estate as a high priority residential, rezone land east of Doyle's Road into industrial and open Excelsior Avenue as a potential rural residential zone for Marupna. My points are as follows. Radio Australia is new land, not identified in our 2030 strategy. It has leapfrogged other developments that have been waiting for decades. It will create another anomaly like Dobson's Estate, which we are told is not good for planning outcomes. There's been no time to fully consider alternative land use. Someone mentioned councillor Ryan, a former councillor, wanted a sports precinct and a new location for Deacon Reserve out there, which we have not had time to consider. The process has also been muddied by accusations of conflict of interest, which will likely land us in VCAT either way. So I'm actually erring on the side of caution here by removing it from the document. There will be opportunity to include Radio Australia at one of our biannual reviews of this plan after further consideration. I won't get into north of Dobson Estate because councillor Brophy has outlined that beautifully and it would be a great substitute for residential land that was proposed for Radio Australia. Shep East is a, sorry, Shep East is a longstanding proposal. It had over seventy submitters in support of making it industrial. And one of our own documents from 2011 states the Doyle's Road area-
Time, councillor Summer, would you like an extension?
Yes, please.
Granted.
Okay, thank you. It is considered to be a strong location for business well after the GV Highway bypass is constructed. So that idea of the bypass being a hard no is not, it hasn't always been the case. Doyle's Road also presents an expansion and relocation option for the types of businesses that are located in Benala Road. Noel Authority has directly opposed this proposal, instead citing further analysis and research. There's currently no low-density residential zones in close proximity to Marupna. Excelsior Avenue is unique in much the same way as Radio Australia, as it has one point of ownership. So development costs will likely be borne by them. Drainage, flooding and Golden Murray Water infrastructure concerns are not insurmountable and the bigger lots will have positive financial, environmental and social impact on the Marupna and Ardmona areas. So as councillor Priestley said, there will always be winners and losers and I'd love to again remind councillors, we represent all of the municipality, not individual landholders, I keep that front of mind. This is a future for Greater Shepparton that I believe is the most successful model and it's not about rushing it. So I urge you all to oppose this motion and vote in support of the foreshadowed motion, please. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Summer. Would any councillor wish to speak for the motion? Councillor Abdullah?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keeffe. I support this motion and a few thoughts. First of all, just to make sure that everybody understands that the Victorian Planning Authority in collaboration with council has prepared this 2050 Growth Plan, which obviously identifies strategic advantages, addresses key challenges and basically sets a vision to guide sustainable growth and development up to 2050. Primarily, it is a land use document and the growth provides an improved and more certain environment for making public and private investment decisions. Also, as we know, the 2050 Growth Plan has gone through extensive consultation and the report includes conversation report, which provides additional community consultation that was done in March 2021 and it reflects all the feedback that was received and it summarises all the responses from council. This report, so the planning scheme amendment process, which starts after the adoption of Growth Plan, will offer another opportunity for submission to independent planning panel and as my fellow councillors have noted, a further opportunity for consultation will be there. Independent planning panel will have experts from planning, transport and other areas to further examine the recommendations. I want to commend council officers for their diligence and hard work in responding to the community consultation feedback and to numerous robust discussions that we have had in the last council term and also in this new term. And the level of engagement of new and experienced councillors in this matter is also commendable. This has been one of the most extensively researched and debated items in the first six months of the new council, I must note. Some of my thoughts are also along the lines of, first of all, to make sure that everybody understands that Growth Plan is not a static document, it is not set in a stone and there is a provision to review the plan every two to five years. Secondly, the Growth Plan has been prepared with VPA's involvement and advice and VPA has been directed by the planning minister to provide this advice. And the minister's directive is that in preparing any amendment to rezone land, the planning authority, that is council in this case, must consult with the VPA and have regard to that advice. It obviously is to ensure consistent and coordinated urban development of places. Well, urban planning is, to my understanding, urban planning is not something that planners carry out in isolation and there are several considerations and it requires balancing of communities' aspirations and concerns, which councillor Summer has also highlighted, with other constraints such as environmental, transport, economy and also to balance it with the-
Time, councillor Abdullah, would you like an extension?
Can you please?
Granted.
Thanks. So it has to be balanced with the feedback from other statutory authorities and their respective future plans. So this is something that we cannot ignore. Urban development planning takes into account many competing requirements and priorities and the breadth and depth of planning considerations is an area of specialised knowledge and technical expertise and the one where planners, for their professional advice, are to be questioned for sure, but also have to be trusted. So in case of 2050 Growth Plan, I am satisfied that the officer's recommendations and the motion that has been put forward by councillor Priestley, they have taken into account the inputs from the community and assessed them in conjunction with the inputs from all referral authorities, Broken Catchment Management Authority, Golden Valley Water, Regional Roads, Department of Transport. In addition to that, what the Planning and Environment Act says, what are the planning practice notes. These are very sort of, so that's a complex area of study and recommendation and I'm satisfied that a lot of hard work has gone into it. If this Growth Plan is adopted by council, a planning scheme amendment will be prepared to implement the findings of the Growth Plan into the planning scheme and any planning scheme amendment, it takes around twelve to eighteen months to complete and further consultation will occur, as I've said earlier. The concerns that we have heard from our community have been around, there have been many concerns and as I've said, that I'm satisfied that we have thoroughly investigated all of them and the motion that is on the table now is covering all the responses. But, you know, in terms of the land use supply, for instance, that there's a land supply shortage, my understanding is that under 2050 Growth Plan, there is enough residential land, which has been identified to satisfy fifteen years requirement. And what is needed now is to proceed with planning scheme amendment process to rezone the identified land that is already included in 2050 Growth Plan. We perhaps do not need to identify additional residential land, we need to bring to market the land that is already identified in the plan. Similarly, there have been concerns around the Shepparton East land use and the rezoning of that land from agricultural to residential. We have seen the land use study that was done and obviously it has identified that a number of physical and land use constraints are there, whereas this land is not suitable for urban development. I do understand the constraints that have been identified, such as a large portion of the site is subject to overland flooding.
Time, councillor Abdullah, have you just about finished?
Yeah, so just to make sure that, so many considerations, so many competing priorities and requirements and I'm satisfied that-
Time, thank you.
-have taken into account.
Thank you very much for that. Would any councillor wish to speak for the motion? Councillor Sali?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keeffe. Look, this has been an ongoing discussion that was put on the table in August last year for further consultation. Further consultation, endless amounts of discussions and submissions were from our community, all sharing extremely relevant detail. This still left us with further time needed to consider a decision. This current group of councillors moved twice to hold this over until tonight to make sure we have all the relevant information to be armed to make the best decision for our community. Do we have enough residential land? Do we have enough industrial land? Are we making sure that we aren't stretching too far north and south? Are we catering for the potential growth due to Greater Shepparton Secondary College? Are we considering further development in Marupna? These are the questions I've been asking. I've also read numerous reports to make sure I have everything in place to help with my decision. We have seen additional land added to the strategy in certain parcels not included. The constant discussion around the viability of agricultural land in Greater Shepparton will always be up for debate. How can we protect agricultural investment, but at the same time continue to evaluate the need of certain land for use other than farming needs? If the current uptake of residential land continues to grow, then it may force some early changes for the need to include further residential land. I do support majority of the plan, but the lack of industrial land included is a concern to me. In my opinion, the success of current future identified industrial land is heavily reliant upon the investment into the GV bypass. As much as I'd love to introduce further industrial land, in particular along the east of Doyle's Road, this unfortunately was not part of the original consultation and would not provide procedural fairness to those who live in and around properties on Doyle's Road. Moving forward, I will work with the council to develop strategic justification for the changes I've been talking about. It is highly likely that this strategy will go to an independent planning panel appointed by the minister for further consideration. An up-to-date review of industrial and residential land will need to take place in the coming months and this is an opportunity not only for myself, but the community to advocate for further changes to this strategy. This strategic plan isn't set in concrete. Nobody knows what the future will hold. I look forward to this strategy being reviewed and perhaps submissions that were rejected are reconsidered with a different lens over them. It would be fair for me to presume that councillors will be keeping a very close eye on how this strategic plan unfolds. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Sali. Would any other councillor wish to speak for the motion? No? So just before, actually before we go to your write-up reply, I'd just like to add a few comments. So thank you councillors for your input. It's been a very interesting time, I'm sure for us all, we've all can identify that. Planning is very complex, it's very complicated and we've all learnt so much along the way. Planning is very complex, it's very complicated and we've all learnt so much along the way. But I do acknowledge the efforts and commitment, but also the community members that have been, you know, bringing information to us as well. It's a collaborative effort, council with our residents, you know, with our ratepayers, with our community. Thank you to our council staff, you know, it's been exhausting and they've given us a lot of extra time, which we have needed and appreciated. It hasn't been, you know, obviously a tick the box, it's been a lot of discussions, a lot of in-depth discussions and conversations and I know that those conversations will continue. I still feel there's some opportunity of change because our community is changing and as we move into the future, we need to keep identifying and pushing for some of those things that do need to change. We may not be seeing them as clearly now, or perhaps we are. One of those things for me is land that's been retired or exhausted, not being used for many years, like the land at Dobson, Dobson Estate. What is going to happen to that land? Is it going to sit for another 17 years? We need to look at those opportunities and what will happen as we progress as a city and as a community, as a region. There's a lot of things changing, you know, we can see it, we live it, but I'd just like to say thank you to all of you around the table for giving this the respect and the effort and the time that has been needed to get to the table tonight. It's been very appreciated by myself and I'm sure many others. Councillor Priestley, would you like your right of reply?
No further comment. Thanks Mayor O'Keeffe.
Thank you very much. All right, we'll now go to the vote. All those in favour? Against?
Division please.
All those in favour, councillor Abdullah, councillor Priestley, councillor Spinks, councillor Sarli, councillor James, councillor Brophy and councillor O'Keeffe. And those against, councillor Summer. Motion is carried. I'd now like to declare the meeting closed. Thank you.